Nobody gives you a chance.
Good evening, everybody. Today is November 2nd and this is a Moscow City Regular Council meeting. Before I start anything, I just want to remind everybody that tonight is the eve of the election, so please go and vote tomorrow. And you will hear me say that a couple of times during tonight's presentation. With that, I will let everybody rise and I'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the next thing what I will be doing, I will be speaking about a Veterans Day proclamation I am going to make. Whereas November 11th is the anniversary of the Armistice signed by the Allies and the Germans in 1918, which ended World War I after four years of conflict. President Woodrow Wilson issued the first Armistice Day proclamation in November in 1919 and set the tone for future observances by observing that. To us in America, the reflections on Armistice Day will be filled with the solemn pride and the heroism of those who died in the country's service and with gratitude for the victory, both because of the thing from which it has freed us and because of the opportunity it has given America to show her sympathy with peace and justice in the councils of the nation. And whereas the name was changed from Armistice Day to Veterans Day by an act of Congress in 1954, when then-President Eisenhower called on citizens to observe the day in honor of all who served in America's wars through the years, and whereas more than 135,000 veterans of our nation's military reside in Idaho and almost 5,000 of them live in our area. And whereas the Veterans Assistant Program at the University of Idaho is committed to helping student veterans and their dependents succeed, and whereas our nation is indebted to the service of the men and women who have made great sacrifices, endured long absences from loved ones, and suffered injury or death to protect our homes and families. And whereas Idaho National Guard 126th Engineers in Moscow were organized and federally recognized on April 26, 1929 as Troop K, 116th Cavalry, an element of the 24th Cavalry Division, and whereas then converted and re-designated Battery F, 148th Field Artillery, Moscow was first inducted into the federal service September 16, 1940 and inactivated December 31, 1945 in Japan. And whereas through many designations and periods of active federal service with campaign credit in World War II, and most recently as part of the 116th Engineer Battalion mobilized to support Operation Iraqi Freedom, the 126th Engineers have served their community and country. And whereas Veterans Day is an opportunity to honor our nation's veterans and the 126th Engineers for their sacrifices, now therefore I, Bill Lambert, the Mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2015, as Veterans Day. In the city of Moscow, and I urge all citizens to reflect upon the sacrifices made by American military personnel to preserve and promote enduring peace around the world. Thank you. And I do not think we have anybody here to receive the proclamation for Veterans Day, so we'll move on to the next thing. And that will be the consent agenda.
Your Honor?
Dan.
I'd make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
And I would second it.
Okay, we got a motion by Dan and a second by Wayne to approve the consent agenda. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, and then we'll move on to public comment. This is the time of evening that a public comment and mayor's response period could last up to 15 minutes and anything that is not on our council agenda this evening or in front of Planning and Zoning or the Board of Adjustment, if you do wish to speak, please state your name and address for us. We have a nice large group here, but nobody's rushing to the podium, so I will move on to item number three, which is our Wyscape Awards. Nicole Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Mayor's Wyscape Award is one of the many programs offered by the city of Moscow to help our citizens to save water. The city of Moscow draws water from two different aquifers, the Grand Rhond Aquifer and the Wanapum. The Grand Rhond Aquifer, the city receives about, gets about 70 percent of the water from that aquifer and the remaining amount from the Wanapum. Here's a look at the Grand Rhond Aquifer levels. As you can see in the past, it has been declining at a foot and a half per year and then more recently closer to a foot a year. So in order to help conserve that aquifer, in 1992, groundwater management plan was created for voluntary goals of all of the stakeholders of this aquifer. That would include the city of Moscow, the city of Pullman, Whitman County, Leita County, U of I, WSU. Here's a look of how, you know, an overall look of the calendar year on how Moscow, how much we water we pump. As you can see, this area right here is about, you know, your summertime use. Now, I'm only going to be talking about the Wyscape Award tonight and targeting our outdoor water use. We have plenty of programs for our indoor water use as well, but tonight's agenda, we're going to be talking about our outdoor water use, which is right above this baseline. So this baseline here essentially is anything below it, we can consider indoor water use. The average household in the city of Moscow uses about 520 cubic feet of water every month, and so you can consider that anything beyond that is going to be used for your outdoor irrigation. So the Wyscape program, among others, is a way to target making this go down a little bit for our community. So the Wyscape approach essentially is recognizing those in the community that save water with their landscaping choices. So essentially, you can make some soil enhancements, amend your soils, and then do proper plant selection, and you're well on your way to a Wyscape. In addition to the Wyscape Award, a year after that was established in 2009, the city of Moscow Water Department decided to have a demonstration garden at the Water Department. As you can see from the before and after, that's a drastically different looking landscape. This is about 1,500 square feet of landscape, and we also have our own irrigation meter, so therefore we can let our customers know exactly how much water we're putting on that Wyscape. So with that in mind, if you consider slightly over 1,500 square feet at the Water Department, the Wyscape is going to be, the actual data is going to be your bar right there, that green bar. So the purple bar would be the same area, that 1,500 square feet, as if it's watered in a more efficient way that has traditional turf. This is going to be your same traditional turf, but watered inefficiently, meaning somebody's watering to a dry spot, so they're overwatering other areas. What you can see from this, and of course, there's a variation because our irrigation season varies every year. We haven't declared irrigation season. It typically does range between somewhere in May through October. So with that, you can see with a Wyscape, after that establishment year where, of course, we use just as much water as if we were watering, you know, turf efficiently, establishment typically does take more water, but after that, your water use significantly drops. So what does that mean for your pocketbook? Here's a look at what this would be for your residential customer. We have a tiered rate system at the city of Moscow for residential customers, so that first, I already mentioned, 520 cubic feet is your average for your indoor water use, so that leaves 180 cubic feet to keep you within this Tier One, which is the lower, more economical rate for the city. And then anything above that, so that's a 700 to 2,000 cubic feet range, is Tier Two, and then anything beyond that would be Tier Three. So you can see even with, even with watering your lawn in an efficient way, you're still in that higher tiered bracket. So with your Wyscape after establishment, you're well within that second tier. Also, this is a nice reminder, the city does have regulations for irrigation. Wyscape helps you to follow city code because if you're using the proper irrigation-like drip, you're going to easily fall within ordinance where you're not watering impervious surfaces. The irrigation season is set every year, and within that irrigation season, you're not allowed to water with sprinklers during the daytime hours. You're limited to the hours of 6:00 PM to 10:00 in the morning. We also have a water waste resolution. Essentially, that means with any irrigation system that you have with the city, that's hooked into the city system, you have to have it properly maintained. There's variances for new landscapes, knowing that you obviously have to water during the day at times. So other benefits would be urban wildlife. You have a variety of species in your yard now instead of just the one turf grass. You have pollinators. Pollinators are, you know, an important thing, and it's been something that the city of Moscow, we've had a couple of events where people came to learn how they can promote pollinators in their yard, so it helps with that as well. So real quick, I'm going to show what it's like to make this transformation and why you would want to do it. You saw this picture already before. This is typical Palouse. You have spray heads. There are the more economical spray heads. You see them around, but they don't stand up to that Palouse wind. So that means, you can see, we're watering impervious surfaces. You're not, that's against city code. The ordinance states you can't do that. You're actually still watering turf, but look, it's still brown, it's patchy. There's a lot of issues with this, with this picture, so we decided to convert it to a Wyscape. The first thing you want to do is obviously get rid of that turf, but you really want to make soil amendments. Healthy soil is the key to any healthy landscape. Here's an example of the diversity and color you can see. This used to be all turf. This is actually a picture taken from a Wyscape, featured Wyscape from the past. Here's a more Xeric design. This is from the, at the U of I Arboretum. Here's a more natural design, so you can take a lot of different ideas and make it yours. You can take the ideas from our nominees and essentially, your imagination can take you anywhere with these Wyscapes. One thing to remember, that when you're doing proper plant placement, it's not just about, oh, this plant needs shade or sun. You're looking at areas where you radiate heat. This is going to be hotter right here. Where do you, when it snows, where are you going to shovel that snow? Probably onto those plants. So little things like that, where you need to make sure that the plants you're picking and placing in that area, not only are they all the same water needs for that area, but they will withstand the southwest winds that we get. So these are all things to consider. Another important aspect is efficient irrigation, especially that first year. You saw our Wyscape still required quite a bit of water to become established. These right here are rotary heads. I showed you those spray heads. Rotary heads do a much better job with dealing with the Palouse winds. So if you do need to have overhead spray, whether it be you do have a small patch of turf or you have a lot of small plants and that's going to work out better for you, look into the rotary heads. They cost a little bit more, but in the long run, you're going to be saving water and energy as well. My preferred method is the drip irrigation. You see these little tubes? So they come off this main tube here, and you just punch a little hole in there, and there's a tool that's, you know, real easy to use, and then you bring out your spaghetti tubes. What's great about this is not only are you just watering where the plants are and their roots, so you're not watering all this area that weeds would grow. Of course, when it rains, the weeds are going to get, you know, precipitation, but you're not watering the weeds. And then you add this mulch, and you're also, you know, doing some more weed retention as well. The great thing about this drip is, this plant dies or you don't like it, you can plug it up. Or this plant needs a lot more water than that, let's say, you know, because it's a shrub, and shrubs need more water than, you know, a herbaceous perennial, you can put a higher level emitter on that. So it really does open up a whole new way of being able to do your proper plant placement. So on to our Wyscapes, why we're all here. These are all the people that were nominated but will not be featured this evening. I wanted to show all of these beautiful yards. They've inspired other people in the community. They are nice enough to let us share their pictures. I've been at events like the fair. They will be up at the Co-op in May next year, so these people all have been kind enough to share their Wyscapes with us. This one is an established, this, she, we had six different categories. This one is a new. This is established. This one's established. And in fact, these people were nominated on the first year we had a Wyscape in 2008, and they were re-nominated again. And we have, for the commercial category, these two nominees, and then we had the Moscow Transit Center. What I really loved about the Moscow Transit Center is they have all these green strips, and instead of putting grass, it's virtually impossible to be able to water grass in those skinny little parking strips and keep the water in the parking strips. So the fact that they did something different, it's still beautiful and gives shade to the trees, or the trees to the car, shade from trees to cars, excuse me. So therefore, you know, if you park there in the summertime, maybe your car won't be roasting. So there's a lot of different reasons I really liked that Wyscape. This gal here, she did a great, she does have some turf. We're not saying turf is bad, we're just saying, let's be smart about which turf species we plant, and let's be smart about how and where we plant it. So there's, you know, a place for that green space as well. I'll mention one of our featured nominees, featured Wyscapes. Sandra Stoops is not here, she's traveling, but she, this is a home that was all that dried up looking grass, and she ripped it all up, and this is her, she's well on her way to her Wyscape. As you can see, the plants are still pretty young because this is our residential new category. And with that, I'm going to let Mayor Lambert take over.
Yeah, thank you very much, Nicole. One of the things that our Wyscape Awards that we present has become an annual thing, and I get excited about it. It's kind of one of the fun things to be able to talk about. And as we're going along, when we first started Wyscapes a dozen years or so ago, and as it's evolved, it's becoming more and more of a normal. And so what we're doing is we're seeing lots of places. There's dozens of places around town that have had these, that have not been nominated, but are within the realm of very wise Wyscape additions. And so, and all of us know that we need to conserve water, we need to use it in a practical way because it is a resource that we need to be able to, you know, recycle, reuse, and do it in a smart manner. And so with that, I'm very proud, it's a difficult thing to make a decision who should win an award, who should not win an award, because there's so many of them, they're all excellent. So it's not that, it's kind of a tough thing to go through, and I like to drive around and look at these and look at different places. And so with that being said, the folks that didn't win, it wasn't because they didn't deserve it, they clearly did deserve it. It's just that you only have so many winners like anything else. But with that, I'm sorry that Sandra wasn't here because this was a terrific way of presenting it, I thought, for a new residence. But with that, we'll go on to our residential established. And the winner is Victoria Seaver. And this is a unique thing because this has been a resident that has been there for quite a while. Come on up, Victoria. And it's neat how she's done this with her cat, Honey, Honey Bear. And I, you know, one of the things, I like cats. Everybody knows I've got a cat, a big orange cat, Morris, and so I'm fond of cats, but this is particularly neat. Now, Victoria, she received a lawn ornament, and I would like to see if you'd like to say a few words. Victoria?
Before we get your picture.
Want me to hang on to this?
Okay. I didn't plan on saying anything. I'm glad my cat's in the picture.
What's the cat's name?
Honey, Honey Bear.
Okay.
So my whole yard's Wyscape. I just started chipping away at it a little bit at a time, and there's just a little tiny strip of grass in the front, and in back, there's a square underneath the clothes line, and that's it. Everything else is bark and flowers.
Spring.
And shade and trees and insects and bees and all that kind of thing.
Well, let's go.
And a handweed.
In hand.
And you can do it. It's not just a weed.
Thank you. One of the things that, one of the things that Victoria, and it was pointed out here, is she just pecked away, did a little bit at a time and make it happen. So these are the types of projects you can do over a number of years and just keep chipping away at it, and that's kind of the fun thing about doing it. It becomes a project, and when it's completely done, it really looks wonderful. The next category will be residential community. And we've got two winners in this, and residential community is more like towards a multi-housing type of a thing. We've got Pam Steele and David and Jan Jerusalem here with us. And so at this time, I'd like to call them both up. Let's see, we've got David is in attendance and Pam, and they will both receive lawn ornaments as well. And you folks, if you'd like to speak. You don't have to if you don't want to, but you're welcome to speak if you'd like. Now, ladies first.
Well, actually, my wife did this. I was just the grunt person watering and moving the hoses and doing that kind of stuff. She's a master gardener. She went through the program at U of I. We've always had, when we lived in Minnesota, we had a greenhouse on the back of our house. We had the water electric heat, and so Minnesota winters get pretty cold, you know. And so anyway, she's just always been a plant. In our house, we had over 500 plants, if you can believe that or not. That's not even the greenhouse, so we've really been there. And we appreciate this very much, and thank you very much.
David's got 500 plants in his house. Holy smokes. I thought I had a lot with 30, and so that 500 is a bunch. Okay, the next is public facility. And this is our very own 1912 center, and geez, you know, we had two. We had 1912 center, we also had the transit. And I, as Nicole, I like the idea where in the transit center, you've got the center lanes, but you don't have to water them, and you've got to figure out what you can do with them. That makes it kind of an interesting thing. But the 1912 is just such a wonderful building and things, and this really sets it off and accents it, in my opinion. So Jenny, are you here somewhere? Come on up, Jenny, and you've got a group with you. Bring your group up here. Let's see, we have Isaac. Which one is Isaac?
I'm Isaac.
I'm Bill. Isaac, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
Who's this guy over here?
Greg.
Greg, how are you, Greg?
Jenny and the Gardeners.
Jenny and the Gardeners. We're going to start a band.
Do you want to get us to do a little rock and roll thing with Jenny? And?
(singing) Water ring, you can do it.
And with that, we've got a nice.
Yeah, I'm the.
Do you want to say anything?
I'm happy to say something.
I'll hop up here and.
So, um, so my team, Deep Roots Design, what is your whole title?
Deep Roots Farm and Design.
Deep Roots Farm and Design. These guys are multitasking because they bring me my vegetables to eat from their farm, and then they take care of the landscaping, and it works out really well for all of us. I eat healthy, and that's good, so I can keep running the facility. And they get a break from the garden and the farm to come hang out with us, and we do community things. So it's a really great partnership, and so thank you very much, you two, for keeping us wise in our escaping.
Let's all crunch in here.
This way.
This way?
Oh, yeah, I have to hold it so like I look like I'm taking it.
Thank you for that.
This is so pretty. Ooh la la.
Thank you, Jenny, and the Deep Roots. The Deep Roots, awesome. Okay, the next is private facilities, and this is the Unitarian Universalist Church of the Palouse, and with us is Pat Rathman and others. Dan, would you like to come up? Would you like to speak?
Yes. I just wanted to say that all I did.
That way you can.
I just wanted to say that all I did was fill out the application. So I have some folks, I have some folks with me that really deserve the credit for most of the work. Our minister, Elizabeth Stevens, come on, who gave us much encouragement, and two members of our Green Sanctuary Committee, Selma Carney and Rod Sprague, who really, really did most of the work. And so we couldn't have done it without them. And I would also like to point out to Nicole that we purchased six rain barrels a couple of years ago, so we water with rain barrels. And now, thanks to Rod, he's come up with an idea that he saw online. We are going to purchase a solar-powered pump, so we no longer have to walk around with, you know, little watering cans to do our watering. So we're trying our very best to be sustainable.
Very nice. All you have to do is speak and you don't have to do the work. That's kind of my motto, too, and I do that a lot with cities to have another, so. Okay, and then in our last group here is the commercial. Commercial, we had a couple, it was three different entries, and Fairfield Inn and Suites was nominated, and they're beautiful what they've done out there, this wonderful place. We've got Chris Rohr and Rhonda Nicholson, or Michelson, I guess that is, I'm sorry. Come on up, please.
Just wanted to say thank you from the city on this wonderful award. You know, looking around at some of the issues around the country with people that are dealing with droughts, it's wonderful that the city of Moscow has put into place such wonderful ideas and different things to conserve water. And it really does show, and I know we probably have work to do, but I think we're making the strives and we're doing a wonderful job with it, and our hotel is happy to be a part of that.
With that, I would love to give all the nominees as well as award winners a complete round of applause. Let's all do this. This is very, very nice. It was a very good evening to do it. And Wyscape, as we're going along, and thank you for those remarks, Chris, because you're absolutely right. We're making some headway and we're striving along, and it's something that's going to continue to grow in our community that's very important to all of us. And with that, thank you, Nicole, for the presentation you did.
Thank you, everyone. We do appreciate all your efforts. Remember, you can visit us at the Water Department and check out our demonstration garden. And for nominees for next year, please make your nominations by September 15. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our 2015 Annual HLAC Report by Eric Newell. Eric, how are you doing this evening, sir?
I'm a little under the weather, but we'll get this going.
Okay.
Is this mine?
Everyone leaving is missing a great presentation, just so they all know. Mayor, Council, this is the opportunity I have to come and talk to you about this year's year at the pool. Just a few highlights for you. This is what we're going to run over the next few minutes. I want to also let you guys, just remind you, as we go through this, we employed over 85 individuals at the pool this year. We were open for 83 days. We were closed for five days beginning of the season due to the floods in Texas and the arrival of our moose. And last year, our average high in August and September was 83.2, and this year it's 82.2. However, if you notice, over the year, it actually averages out to almost a two and a half degree increase, or actually over two and a half degree increase from last year to this year. Hence the reason our numbers were so good, and we had so many people at the pool. We break down also by how many people are at the pool each day. If it's cold, obviously, we don't have as many as when it's hot. And this year, if it's hot, we averaged over 1,200 people a day on temperatures that were over 90. And as you can see, we had 23 days that were over 90 degrees. So there were a lot of days we had a lot of people at the pool. Sorry, I'm a little hoarse. I apologize. Revenues, the concession stand this year were up just a little bit over last year. We did save about $1,000 on our expenses, and so we're hopefully making more money and spending less money. I think that's the goal. And this year, we made over $20,000 going through the concession stand. Excuse me. The pool rental revenue this year was down a little bit. And the big reason that was down is because the gold medal swim team chose another location to do their outdoor swimming this year, or to do their swimming this year during the summer, but they decided, chose not to come to the pool this year. And so that was, that's normally about a $1,200 contract that we have with them, and they went somewhere else. And so that's the big reason of the difference. This year, at the swim lessons, we had slightly higher revenue. We had slightly lower students, and that was because we offered more, we had more people take the lifeguarding class this year that we offered. And if you see lifeguarding classes, that's $238 for lifeguarding class. So you can have less students and still make more money just based on that. So... Excuse me. The pool scholarships, I know that Dwight will be coming to talk to you about last year's scholarship money, but I'm giving you just the pool at this point in time. Last year, this year at the pool, we gave a total of $13,562 in scholarships to the pool. Of that, $2,999 of that was for swim lessons, and the youth season passes were $10,363. Of breaking that down a different direction, residents used $12,527, and non-residents used $1,035. And just to be clear, the resident funds were all from donated funds from multiple individuals and groups in the community. So this is what you're waiting for. Our cost recovery this year was 95.6%. Our total revenue this year was $313,476. And our total expenses this year were $3,027,904 for a net subsidy of $14,428. This does include the youth scholarships, as that is budgeted and then transferred into donations for the pool. I also went back to 2009, when we started tracking these numbers, and I adjusted these numbers all the way back. So all these numbers from 2009 forward have been adjusted to show where we actually, where our cost recovery was for the last eight years, or six years, seven years. So just another graph where you can see for the last 10 years where revenues, expenses have been. The decrease this year, as you know, there's the click-up, 12, 13, and 14. The slight decrease this year was due to very minimal mechanical issues this year. We actually, we lost a pump, but the nice thing is we have one already in back. So as soon as it went down, that day Strom was out, and Jay and Strom put it right back in, and we didn't miss a beat. At the end of the year, we actually had some funds left over that we were able to purchase another backup pump for next year. So we have that sitting. It's ready to go. So if we were to lose a pump, we can quickly put it in, and we put that in place a few years ago, and it's paid off ever since we've had that in place. But that's the big reason why I see the decrease this year is due to the, just, we've had a great operational year this year. Mechanically, we had almost no issues. So in conclusion, we had an increase in attendance due to warmer weather. We saw an increase in season pass purchases over last year due to Pullman being closed, and also we've had an awesome pool. Concession sales stayed steady, and swim lessons stayed steady as well. Just so you guys know, the additional expenses this year, the first one is included in the actual numbers for this report, which is this 20 pool lounge chairs that we purchased for $3,300. The roof repairs and the frog slide replacement with the moose slide were capital projects. That's not included in the subsidy in this. This is just the operational that you're seeing. So the roof repair cost total $61,000. And the new moose slide replacement of the frog slide, which is down at Watson Carries, should you miss it, was $31,000. So if you need to go see the frog slide and give him a great big kiss, he's down at Watson Carries.
You bet you don't still have a poo.
So looking ahead to next year, we will continue to be, keep recreational water illnesses out. If you guys remember, a few years ago, we had cryptosporidium in the pool, and we were doing our diligence to keep that out. We'll work diligently to keep increasing revenue any way we can and reducing costs any way we can. And then also, I want to say thanks to everybody in the city, from my staff, that works directly for the pool, and all the support staff throughout the entire city for making this a great, a great season. Is there any questions that I can answer?
John.
Yeah, Eric, as I understand it, then the city had to subsidize the pool by about $14,000?
Yes.
That's excellent. I can remember being on the council when that number was a lot closer to $60,000.
I remember giving that report when the number was closer to $60,000.
Yeah. And what you and the staff have done, excellent.
Thank you. Jim, you have it.
Yeah, the concessions profitability there, where you make $20,000 on the concessions, does that go, that's not included in your profit-loss statement, is it?
Yes, it is. That's included in everything. That's included...
It's in the revenue?
It's in the revenue, and it's also in the expense.
So that's a net. We didn't get $20,000 that we can apply to that.
No, that's just off of what we, off of what we purchased, we sold it then for that amount. That does not include staffing either. We, that is, that's just, we spent this much money on concessions, we sold this much for concessions.
It's gross.
And Councilman Weber, if I could point out, I had no control over the weather. This year, the weather smiled on us. And this is one of those years that I've talked to you guys about many times, what happens when the weather's 85 every day? We need to make sure we have that money for lifeguards, so we did. And we had, we had the money we needed, so.
Interestingly, I went by a number of days that it was 90 degrees, and that place was so packed a couple of different times, I thought, geez, I don't know how many people you're supposed to be able to have in there with a max from the, if there's some fire code, but there was a couple of times. I mean, it was like wall-to-wall, literally, people. Dan?
Eric, I know earlier in, early in the season, you were looking for lifeguards pretty hard. Did you end up being fully staffed?
We ended up being fully staffed, yeah. We, that's why we offered two classes for lifeguarding. And then we also had a few of them that worked back till the end of the summer, and so that helped fill in the end. But I would encourage you guys, as you're out and about, and talking to people, that we do offer a good summer job for, for individuals to get their career started. A lot of the lifeguards that are now in management, or concessionaires are now in management, have all worked it away from the beginning. Cassie Shireman has been here since the pool opened, so.
Walter?
Mayor, following up on your comment about bodies at the pool. I talked to Eric today and asked him if he's hitting a maximum or not. He says, no, we've still got grass for people to get on, and you can still, you can still get in the pool without being totally on top of each other. So he's not real sure, if I understood him correctly, what the maximum may be is a lot of turnover during the day. People come, they go, they don't stay the whole time, but it's been really busy. I felt that we got a lot of people out of Pullman this year. I drove through the parking lot a couple of times and read license plates, and there were a lot of Washington plates, because it was a reeny pool that was shut down over there.
Reeny was shut down, yeah.
And Eric can correct me, but I believe what he told me was that he would like to think that, that the facility we've got will keep those people coming over here even if they get reeny back open, which they've done. So it's a great job. When I asked him about his decreased expenses and so forth, he said it had to do a lot with not having breakdowns. I suggested he also use the line, which he didn't use, which is good management. Doing a, doing a great job. And Don, if you didn't hear it way back there in the back, the subsidy this year was a little over $14,000.
Well, the good news is, too, anytime we can snag somebody to come over from Pullman, maybe we can sell them something else here in town, too, you know? The food, or stop by and buy something somewhere else. So that's always a good thing. Other questions for, or comments for?
Good job.
Thank you very much. Wonderful report, Eric. Good job with your team. Okay, that is the conclusion of our regular agenda. We will move into reports. Dan, we'll start with you.
Well, we didn't have administrative committee, so Wayne will talk about all of the committee stuff that went on in the other committee meeting. I had, I'm going to get through here and remember, this went quicker than I thought. Parks and Rec Commission met, and they're, they're getting through, basically, met all their goals. They're working on their next set of goals, working on, the big discussion, I guess, was a continuation from the meeting before about slacklining. And it sounds like we're going to continue to allow that by not having a, a policy on it, because then you just end up putting yourself out there for liability. And I believe that's the, that was the only meeting I had since the last council meeting.
Mark?
Yeah, Fair and Affordable Housing met last week, and they are ready to move forward with the, with the report on impediments to fair housing. And that draft will be open for public review here in City Council chambers on Thursday the 5th at 7:00 PM for public input on that document that will then subsequently go through a period for other public comment and then appear before us for approval and incorporation with the rest of the plans that the commissions have been going through. And there were no other meetings on my docket.
Okay, very good. Walter?
Several things, Mayor. On the 22nd of October, I met with the 1912 Youth Committee. It was recommended by Jenny and adopted by the Youth Committee to raise slightly the rental fees, the per-hour rental fees for the private and businesses that use the 1912 Center with nonprofits rates staying the same. At 2:00 that day on the 22nd, I went to a meeting down at the Mann Building with, with ITD and city staff regarding the North Main beautification project. In, in asking staff about the status of that, it appeared to me that the status was not moving. That, so we asked ITD for a conference call. They volunteered to come up, so we had three of them up here from Lewiston to sit down. We had the architect on, on the conference call, and I believe got agreement so that things can start moving ahead again. We've had a little problem with ITD when we meet with them and think we've got agreement, and then when they get something, it seems that they don't like it. So we've been a little challenging with, is this really what we're saying? Is this really where we're going? And now just, you know, holding the architect to go in that direction. So see if we can't get that moving along. On the 27th, the mayor and I, and were we the only two at the IDWR board meeting? When the IT, the Idaho Department of Water Resources Board met here in this, in this council chamber. Very nice of them to do that. You read about them in the paper sometimes and press releases, and you rarely see them. They made a comment at the end that they hope to be able to hold a meeting up in North Idaho annually. And I think they did Coeur d'Alene maybe last year and hold a more formal meeting up here next in Moscow. So that would be good. Several questions from the audience about process on adjudication, and, and we work to make sure, and they do, that they understood the difference between the Palouse Basin and how it operates, and the problems that they have worked with for years down in the Snake River Plain, down in southeast Idaho, which is a rechargeable aquifer with a lot more water. And they're just trying to figure out how to allocate it down there. So that was a very good meeting. I'll leave anything otherwise for the mayor to say. On the 28th, I went over to the Pullman Fire Department with Fire Chief to take a look at the possibility of working on putting computers in the fire department rigs here in Moscow. I understand that in the current budget, there's enough money to get units in the Fire Chief, the Assistant Chief, and the battalion car to get started on that, and then look toward finding a way to get budgetary authority to install them in the trucks themselves. Good meeting with, with Fire Chief over in Pullman and a couple of his staff and a couple of his IT people to help explain what they've been doing with it, how it's working, and how they've staged their way into using it. From, at 3:00 that afternoon, I met with the campus community coalition, which some people still refer to as the Alcohol Task Force, worked on talking about ways to reduce alcohol use and overuse by, primarily by students here in Moscow. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Walter. Wayne?
Thank you, Mayor. As Dan indicated, last Monday, the admin committee did not meet. Public Works and Finance took care of what business was there, and it was a fairly short session. We only had three items on the agenda. Those three items were on the consent agenda tonight. No reports to be given at that time. Then last month, on the 20th, met with Smart Transit. Smart Transit has completed, or is in the final stages of completing their 2016 budget, which is an expanded budget due to increased funding. And we just signed a check, I think it was about $47,000, a pass-through check to the city of Moscow for some bus shelters. We're going to be getting some bus shelters at Walmart, and then we're also going to get that one down at D and Mountain View, right? Okay, now what about, what's some other ones, Gary, that are coming up soon?
Boy, I'm not exactly sure exactly what the priority list is. We were trying to get the Walmart shelter up before winter.
Right.
Because it's pretty highly used. Then the rest of them were going to be installed next spring, so.
Well, Smart Transit was very fortunate that they were able to acquire enough 5339 funds through the federal and on down to the state in order to purchase some more bus shelters. So we're partnering, partnering with the city of Moscow in establishing more bus shelters. So that's, that's a really good thing. Farmers Market Commission met, I think on the 22nd, and as everybody knows, this last Saturday was the last farmers market for the year. Very, very successful season. As I think everybody also knows, this Moscow Farmers Market was voted the most desirable one, I'll use, I'll use that term, does that sound right? In the state of Idaho. So it's, it's a benchmark. It really is. They're concerned about some things. They're still having problems they'll work on next year. We're getting the vendors off the street by 2:00. They tend to be a little bit slow sometimes. And there's still a concern of, of some vendors that are not part of the farmers market, they're centering up on the peripheral areas that are causing, you know, a little bit of a problem. But that'll all be shakeout next... to reduce alcohol use and overuse by, primarily by students here in Moscow. And that's it.
Good. Thank you, Walter. Wayne?
Thank you, Mayor. As Dan indicated, last Monday, the Admin Committee did not meet. Public Works and Finance took care of what business was there, and it was a fairly short session. We only had three items on the agenda. Those three items were on the consent agenda tonight. No reports to be given at that time. Then last month, on the twentieth, met with Smart Transit. Smart Transit has completed, or is in the final stages of completing their two thousand and sixteen budget, which is an expanded budget due to increased funding. And we just signed a check, I think it was about forty-seven thousand dollars, a pass-through check to the city of Moscow for some bus shelters. We're going to be getting some bus shelters at Walmart, and then we're also going to get that one down at D and Mountain View, right? Okay, now what about, what's, what's some other ones, Gary, that are coming up soon?
Boy, I'm not exactly sure exactly what the priority list is. We were trying to get the Walmart shelter up before winter.
Right.
Because it's pretty highly used. Then the rest of them were going to be installed next spring, so.
Well, Smart Transit was very fortunate that they were able to acquire enough fifty-three, thirty-nine funds through the federal and on down to the state in order to purchase some more bus shelters. So we're partnering, partnering with the city of Moscow in establishing more bus shelters. So that's, that's a really good thing. Farmers Market Commission met, I think, on the twenty-second, and as everybody knows, this last Saturday was the last Farmers Market for the year. Very, very successful season. As I think everybody also knows, this Moscow Farmers Market was voted the most desirable one, I'll use, I'll use that term, does that sound right? In the state of Idaho. Yep. So it's, it's a benchmark. It really is. They're concerned about some things. They're still having problems they'll work on next year. We're getting the vendors off the street by two o'clock. They tend to be a little bit slow sometimes. And there's still a concern of, of some vendors that are not part of the Farmers Market. They're centering up on the peripheral areas that are causing, you know, a little bit of a problem. But that'll all be shakeout next year and during the winter. The Historical Preservation Commission met on the twenty-second, and they discussed a variety of ideas for some public relations projects. They would like to get the city out there in front of folks a little bit more, with a little more knowledge as to what the actual Historical Preservation Commission really does. There is a discussion of participating with the first and second grade teachers from Palouse Prairie School on a field trip on November sixteenth with their students, and talking about the history of the downtown, City Hall, and McConnell Mansion. And then they had a recap on the Idaho Heritage Conference, which was really, really successful. They were hoping to get, they were hoping to get a hundred and fifty, maybe two hundred people. There was well over two hundred people that attended that. So that was an economic benefit for the city of Moscow, as well as, as it, it really showed the history of the city of Moscow, not only downtown, but University of Idaho, and some of our residential areas. So that's my reports for today.
Jim?
Last Thursday, on the twenty-ninth, I traveled to Lewiston for the Clearwater Basin Resource Conservation and Development Council. And I was careful to be on time, because last time I was late, I got elected president of that organization.[1387.83][1387.83](LAUGHING) And the crux of that meeting was that the, the Clearwater Basin Youth Conservation Corps got an award as the best program, the best nonprofit program in the state of Idaho this year. So that was, that was great. The, the kids learned a lot last year, and they were, they're very anxious to come back. And there are plans to get a Youth Conservation Corps up on the Palouse for next year. So we're pretty excited about getting that going.
John?
Yeah, on the twentieth, the Moscow Human Rights Commission met, and they had a vote for the Shake Award nominations. And there was a winner that was sent to the mayor. That will be presented at the Shake Awards later this week, I believe. And then the Social Justice Forum, Breaking Barriers Together, Access and Inclusion. And the report came through for that. Good participation, about a hundred people showed up, which is very good participation for an event like that. The next item that they're going to be dealing with on the Social Justice Forum is going to be on race, pardon me, and ethnic relations. That's still in the planning stages. And then on the twenty-eighth, the Planning and Zoning Commission met, and the Prospect Place Edition Final PUD and Final Platte was presented, and it did pass. So that is now working its way through the rest of the city system. And probably the most interesting thing about the meeting was, there was a discussion of the relevant criteria and standards for CUP permits and variances. And the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to go through the entire gamut of those in the next few months, and will, if they feel it's necessary, pass that information on in the form of changes to the ordinances. And the city council will then take on that particular bit of work as it becomes necessary. Other than that, I have nothing.
Okay. Thank you, John. For myself, on October twenty-fourth, we had Downtown Homecoming Parade. It was an exciting weekend. We had a record amount of parade folks here. There were, the town was just buzzing on Friday and Saturday. And they had a terrific ballgame when the Vandals won, which was nice, and a good crowd there. All the hospitality after that game was absolutely busy in town. So it was a very, very nice weekend. It was fun. I got a chance to write in a street sweeper, which was fun. I love to do that, bringing a tale of the parade up. On October twenty-seventh, as Walter had mentioned, IDWR was here and had a conference with the board. One of the things that they made very clear to us, and they were pretty impressed by all the different conservation efforts that we're making, and the different meetings that we've had, with the water summits, and, and the plan headed forward. And they were pretty intrigued by that. And so that was a nice compliment that they gave us. On October twenty-eighth, I had an airport board meeting. And with that airport board meeting, on November twelfth, there's going to be an open house at the firehouse at the airport for just the project and where it's headed and where we're going and things. So for anybody that...
Twenty-eighth?
No, the twelfth, November twelfth. The twenty-eighth was the meeting. October twenty-eighth and November twelfth, we got an open house for anybody who wants to come and attend it. And then on November fifth this week, we've got a meet and greet with ASUY, and this entire body up here is welcome to go. That, and that's at Pittman Center.
Six o'clock.
Yep, at six o'clock, to meet with, oh, the senior ASUY student body folks. And so that'll be a fun event. And then later on that night after, I'm going to wear two hats, I'm going to go to that at six, and then a little after seven, I'll be taking off, going to the Manon Shake Award that will be held at the nineteen-twelve. So that's a busy night for me. I'm going to be doing a couple of things, bam-bam. So with that, Gary?
Yes, sir. This Wednesday, we have the monthly regional, or monthly breakfast meeting with the representatives of the school district, Leitalk County, University of Idaho, and others. That's at seven o'clock on Wednesday. Also, we're in the process of identifying a date for a joint meeting with Leitalk County. It looks to be November eighteenth will be that date. I've heard back from, I think, Art, you're going to be out of town most of the month of November, I understand. So we'll get more information out on that, but that, that looks good. So we'll get that out as quickly as we can. You should have all received invitations as well from the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department about their annual awards banquet on December fifth. So if you could please, if you are intending to attend that, please let Karen at the fire station know.
Gary, what's the venue on the breakfast on Wednesday?
That is the Wallace Complex, what they call Quiet Room.
Right. And we haven't been there for six months, so it's the first time in quite a while, Jim. So it'll be where, that's normally where we have it, but they went through the reball process.
Get a chance to eat like a student. You're going to go through the buffet.
Yeah. It has moved around.
Okay, with that, folks, I would remind everybody, tomorrow is election. Get out there and vote. You can only vote once, but make sure you vote once, and have some fun with it. So that's a big deal for everybody. I got one more thing. Dan?
Everybody, tonight at Buffalo Wild Wings is a little fundraiser for the Keep the Beat Moscow. I've been pumping this for quite a few weeks now, trying to get the AEDs in public spaces in Moscow. If you go to the, the Keep the Beat Moscow Facebook page, you can show the ticket out there at Buffalo Wild Wings, and ten percent of your dinner will go to help that fundraiser till midnight tonight.
All right, very good. With that, folks, I would entertain...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor of I.
All right.
Opposed. This meeting is adjourned seven fifty-eight, folks. Thank you very much. Good night.